And good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Before our meeting starts, would you be so kind as to turn your cellphones off or put them on vibrate? So we don't get interrupted in the meeting. Thank you.
I didn't hear nothing.
Larry.
I see your post.
Hey, Larry.
Oh, wait, go. I take it all the way up on the way up.
Yeah.
They're like doing like shorts like on the side, then in the middle.
You know what? They're probably doing like a lot of reconstructive type work.
That's what I'm assuming.
You don't have to see any Marcelo's stationing. That's probably why this contractor's had bigger issues. But they paid that right like every year and shoulder to pride garbage. They're probably doing like.
I'm hoping they're going anyway.
Bend off screwed up.
There was a big wreck on Smith's.
Oh, the truck looked up?
Good evening, everyone. If I can have your attention. Thank you very much. Before we get started, would you kindly turn your cellphones off or put them on vibrate to make sure we're not interrupted? Thank you very much. And with that, I'm opening the meeting of the Bristol Township Planning Commission. Before we get started, I'm going to ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to ask you to remain standing. To keep in mind our troops that are in harm's way, our prisoners of war, our killed in action, our missing in action. For all the children who've been separated from their parents and for any personal intentions you may have. Thank you very much. And good evening and welcome. Commissioners, the first item on our agenda is the consideration of the June 16th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting minutes. You have copies of those minutes. You have had an opportunity to review them. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve those minutes. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda this evening is a subdivision. JMNMLC, care of Joe Kance, 135 South Mermack Drive, Holland, PA. Requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval for property located at 3704 Elmhurst Avenue, Bristol, PA. Tax parcel number 5-59-104. In order to subdivide the property into five lots in an R-2 residential zone district of Bristol Township. Do we have a representative? Is your red green light on?
Red.
All right. He pushed it until... There you go.
Good evening. My name's Larry Young. I'm with Tri-State Engineers. Right here with his lovely daughter is Joe Kance. He is the owner of the company. Again, the property is located in the R2 zoning district. Sixty-five hundred square feet for a lot area, sixty-foot width, lot width. Twenty-five-foot front yard, rear twenty-foot rear yard. Side yards are seven, minimum seven and sixteen feet aggregate. The property is a little over four and a half square feet, 4.5 acres. The rear of the property back here is mostly floodplain and woodlands. The... There is an existing... Can you go to sheet two? There's an existing multifamily dwelling on there, has four units in it, single-family units, residential. There's floodplain line right there, the tree line. And mostly the back of the property is wooded. The applicant proposes to subdivide the single lot into five lots, four of them being sing... Single-family lots, lots one, two, one, three, four, and five. Lot two has the land remaining behind it and contains the multifamily.
If you'd be so kind as to use your pointer to identify the lots, thank you.
There's lot one, lot three, lot four, and lot five. They're the single-family lots. Lot two contains the existing multifamily lot. And it had... We're proposing a parking lot behind it that allows three spaces per unit within that building, which is an ordinance requirement. There are... There's a elongated infiltration basin behind that. All of it is outside of the floodplain. And we have no zoning issues, so to speak. We are asking for some waivers that are synonymous with neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks, curbs, and things like that. Do you want me to go into any of the waivers or go right to review letters?
If you go right into the waivers, identify each number.
Okay.
Thank you for the record.
How did the numbering that Gilmore uses?
For instance, the first one is the... The one that we have right is...
Okay.
We're going to use...
That's fine. This is on section Roman numeral three, A1, is section 17714E. That is a waiver we're requesting for prelim final major subdivision approval instead of separate submissions. Number waiver two is 17735A, which is a waiver from meeting the 26-foot-wide cartway for secondary street. The cartway tends to vary anywhere from 24 to 25 feet wide. The third is a series of waivers that all relate to sidewalks. 17735A, 17743A, 17766A. They all pertain to providing sidewalks along streets. The streets existing, there are no sidewalks in that area, and we would request a waiver from that. The number four. These three sections pertain to curbing along the abutting streets. Section 17735A, 17745A, 17767A. They're all waivers for curbing along the streets. There aren't curbing out there in that area. Number five, 17741F. We're requesting a waiver from requiring the side lot lines to be at right angles or radial. Because this road has such a bend in it, you can see this lot line right here between three and four has a kink in it. All of them are usable backyards because we did make one revision where we removed all the on-lot systems into one bigger basin back here. So the... Each lot has a pretty decent size usable rear yard, even though we do have that that kink in the lot line. Number six, 17741K. A waiver is requested to have parking lots not confined by curbing. Again, the whole theory with this design is everything's going to sheet flow and get intercepted by this basin back here. And it's a dug basin, so the water will run right, right to the south of each lot. And even the parking lot will run into this basin. The number seven, 17748D3. Requesting a waiver for grading within five feet of the property lines. That occurs both on lot five where we get next to the property line and on lot one. We will stake the property line. It has silt fence up or silt sock along the perimeter of the property. So there won't be any encroachment into the adjacent properties before it's excavated. Number eight, 17751A pertains to street trees, the required street trees. Although we do propose some street trees. The issue is the utility poles and lines are on that side of the road. Utilities are run underground all throughout that frontage. And also, the traffic engineer is applying the PennDOT standards for site distance on township roads. So the whole frontage of the property is nothing but site triangles, which a tree would block the site triangle. So we did fit a few of them in, but we were asking for a waiver. The number nine, 17791A1 and 177982, I mean A1. That's for planned scale. Your ordinance requires 50-scale or 100-scale plans. We did it at a slightly larger scale so that you can, you can see it better on the sheet. And the last waiver is to locate existing features within 200 feet of the site. The engineer did not raise any objections to this, and we can provide him with an aerial if Sam or Kurt wants an aerial to show the surrounding area. There are waivers that we're requesting.
Thank you. And as far as the rest of the application, it's all will comply?
Yeah, it's all will comply. The comments will address them. The methodology and the design will not change. It'll be tweaked. You'll still have the big basin behind the lots. The owner of lot two, the multifamily dwelling, will maintain that basin.
And that will be in their agreement?
Yes. Yes. They'll have to sign an O&M agreement stating that.
Okay. Commission, do you have any questions? Yes, Cathy.
You're understood on that.
Yeah, we'll have to provide the fee in a little while.
Okay.
At that point.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Any questions from the audience? Kurt?
We have no comments or concerns at this time.
Samantha?
I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
Bob?
No questions at this time, Joe.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend to counsel the subdivision JMNMLC, CEO Joe Kance, at 135 South Mar McDrive, Holland, PA. Requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval for a property located at 3704 Elmhurst Ave, Bristol, PA. Tax parcel number 5-59-104. In order to subdivide the property into five lots in an R2 residential zone district of Bristol Township. My apologies. And also recommend to counsel to grant the waivers requested.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? It's been moved in second. Any comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you. I'll see you later.
Have a great day. Our next item on the agenda is change in zoning. BCCI Levittown LLC, 4121 Oregon Pike, Brownstown, PA. Requesting change in zoning from C-Commercial to M-2 Heavy Manufacturing for the property located at 6201 Bristol Pike, Levittown, PA. Tax parcel number 5-73-116. We have a representative? Good evening.
Good evening. Julie Von Spreckelson from the law firm of Beastburn and Gray. On behalf of the applicant, BCCI Levittown LLC, which is the equitable owner.
And that was Julie?
Julie.
And is your speaker on?
It is.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I can lean in a little bit if that's better.
Thank you.
As I was saying, the applicant is the equitable owner of the property located at 6201 Bristol Pike. And we do have a number of members from our development team here this evening. So I'll start out by briefly introducing them. To my right, immediately behind me, is Greg Richardson. He is the project traffic engineer from traffic planning and design. Next to Greg is CJ Bach. He is the project civil engineer from Bowler Engineering. Next to CJ is Mike Callahan on behalf of the applicant. Behind Mike is Kevin Delaney, also here on behalf of the applicant. Next to Kevin, or a seat or two down, is Michael Callahan, also on behalf of the applicant. In the back row, the back two, two gentlemen are from Colliers Commercial Brokers. That's Barry Greenberg and Andrew McGee. That's our development team. So we're before you this evening with regard to our request to change the zoning of the property from C-Commercial to M2 Heavy Manufacturing District. And before I get too far into that, I want to briefly turn it over to Mike Callahan. This is the first time the company has been... is developing in this township. So I would like him to just give, I thought it would be appropriate if he would just give a little background on his company and why they're developing this site. Mike?
That would be fine.
Good evening, commission. Thanks for having us.
Good evening. You're welcome.
Julie stole all my thunder. I had introductions and everyone's names and companies written down. So I'm like halfway through my speech. But, you know, thanks for having us tonight. You know, we're certainly excited about the opportunity. I thought it'd be, you know, appropriate to give, you know, a little background on Benchmark. Well, you know, BCCI Levittown LLC, you know, who we are, where we're from. So BCCI Levittown is an affiliate of Benchmark Construction Company. We're based out of Brownstown, Pennsylvania. We've been in, I'm in business for about 36 years. We, you know, are known in the area, you know, as a general contractor and developer. We specialize in healthcare, senior living, you know, multifamily, and industrial properties. And most recently, so we're new to Bristol Township, but we have done, you know, several projects in Bucks County through the years. You know, most recently, over at Penswood, Penswood Village, one of the senior living communities nearby. But, you know, I wanted to give you a little background on kind of how we, you know, came across the property, how we got involved with the owners of it. So the family that owns the Clarion Hotel, they own a handful of these across the state of Pennsylvania. One of them is in Lancaster County. I had reached out to those folks about, you know, inquiring about that property and developing it. And, you know, they had mentioned they weren't really interested in that one, but had offered up, you know, a couple other locations. And this location on Bristol Pike being one of them. So we came out here with the team and it was pretty obvious to us, you know, in the first drive around the site. You know, just from a, you know, location perspective and, you know, accessibility from '95 and, I mean, '76, that it just, you know, it screams, you know, industrial, you know, opportunity. And it was clearly being, you know, underutilized in the current state that it is today. You know, with Amazon going in across the street and with all the excitement within the industrial market these days, we just saw it as a great opportunity to kind of reinvest, you know, in the community. You know, take down a blighted, you know, hotel that's, that may or may not be, you know, the best, you know, fit for that site. And just kind of clean up the block. So, you know, we appreciate your time tonight. I think I'm going to turn it over to... Okay, so Julie's back. But thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
So the property itself, you can see it up on the slide there. It's in the green shade. It's, as I said, Zone C Commercial. It's about nine and a half acres. And a large portion of it...
I'm sorry, Julie, do you have a pointer by any chance? And the reason I...
I'm taking CJ's.
The reason I asked that question is you said you were identifying the green site. Colorblind.
Oh, thank you for letting me know that.
Okay.
So it's right here in this outline. That's where the property is. And you can see it's on Bristol Pike here. It actually has three frontages. So it's Hardy Street is here. Bristol Pike is here, and then Airport Road is along here. You can see it's a very odd shape, three frontages. You can also see the surrounding neighborhood. It's all industrial, and as Mike mentioned, the Amazon going in across the street. It has a lot of non-conformities associated with it. And then it also has a lot of restrictions, natural resources. So as you can... Oops. That's okay. I'm not going to get too much into this. I'm going to let CJ get into it. But I just wanted to let you know that there are some natural resources here. The canal's right here along this property line here. So it's not an easy property to develop, but it definitely is being underutilized as the hotel. And it's tired. It's, it needs to be redeveloped. And so what we're proposing, and if you could switch to the next slide. With regard to the rezoning, this is pretty simple and straightforward. The site is right here, and you... Well, you can't see, but it's a darker purple color. And it's Zone C Commercial. All of this area around it, all the way up here, that is all zoned industrial. So it's zoned M1 and M2. And that's, M2's what we're asking that this property be rezoned to, which is heavy manufacturing. So you can see it certainly wouldn't be spot zoning. In fact, it's sort of spot zoned right now as it is. It's almost like reverse spot zoning. So, and if we rezone this to the industrial site, then it's, you'll have uniformity, which is good planning. It'll be consistent with all the properties around it and will fit in nicely within the area and the neighborhood. The... I just want to point out that the review letters note this as well, that it would be uniform with the other zoning in the area, particularly the county review letter. The county review letter noted that it's consistent with the Route 13 Quarter East Special Study area, which is predominantly industrial zoned. It also, the county also notes that the township comprehensive, comprehensive plan recommends redevelopment opportunities in this area and that the rezoning would provide uniformity and be more in line with the township's future land use vision for this area. So that's the reason for the rezoning. And I know we have on, next on the agenda is a sketch plan. And we can get into that right away to explain what we're proposing for the site in terms of the use in particular, if it is rezoned to M2.
Okay. Well, the fact that they're listed as two separate items on the agenda, I have to treat them as two separate items on the agenda.
Okay.
So we can look at this one and make a decision on what we want to recommend with this. And then we can go to the next one.
Okay, that sounds great.
Okay. Commission, do you... Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I do. So going along the train of thought that you had had, and I understand it is a second agenda item, but what are you thinking of putting there?
So what we're proposing, and if you want to just flip. It's a distribution center is what we're looking at. Either a distribution center or cold storage as well. That's another opportunity. They're not 100% certain yet. It's difficult because it hasn't been rezoned. So it's difficult to market it, and that's why we have the brokers here as well that can advise you of the same, that it's difficult to find a user until the zoning is in place. But it would definitely be something in that, that area, either some type of distribution center, warehousing. So it's an F3 use within the M2. That's what we're looking at.
Any other questions from the commission? Kurt?
I have no comments.
Okay. Samantha?
No questions at this time.
Bob?
No questions, Joe.
I know this is a loaded question, but from the audience?
Exactly.
I'm following. I'm... I love the humor. Follow the protocol. Okay. Okay. Well, thank you very much for that. So that being the case, I would entertain a motion concerning the zoning change recommendation.
I'll make that... I'll make that motion. With regards to the property at 6201 Bristol Pike in Levittown, requesting heavy manufacturing, a change in zoning from C-Commercial to M2 Heavy Manufacturing for the BCCI Levittown LLC, 4121. for the BCCI Levittown LLC, forty-one-twenty-one Oregon Pike, Brownstown, PA. I'd recommend to council to change zoning for them. It's tax parcel five-dash-seven-three-dash-one-one-six.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and second. Any comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations on that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
The next item on our agenda is sketch plan for BCCI Levittown LLC, four-one-two-one Oregon Pike, Brownstown, PA. Requesting sketch plan review for a property located at six-two-zero-one Bristol Pike, Levittown, PA. Tax parcel number five-dash-seven-three-dash-one-one-six. In order to remove the existing building and renovate the existing parking lot in order to construct a one-story distribution facility in a C-Commercial Zone District of Bristol Township.
Good evening. I mean, to elaborate further on...
Good evening, sir. If you'll identify yourself.
Sorry, CJ Bach with Bowler Engineering.
TJ?
CJ.
Okay. Good evening, sir.
Yes, I'm here just to elaborate a little further about some of the things that we're considering for the development of this plan. We detailed a plan and submitted for sketch plan review. And, and to that end, this is the, the plan we had shown. Right now, the plan is showing about a hundred and eight thousand square feet of distribution space. But we do have some other concepts that might make this buildings larger, up to maybe a hundred and forty thousand square feet. But generally, we try to maximize and utilize the existing developed areas as much as possible and the uplands, and, and that way we can continue to preserve what is on the southern border of the property is the segment of the old canal, along which is a, a tow path on the south side of the canal, not on our side. But we are looking to preserve all of the, the canal certainly. There are some adjacent wetland areas in there that we will, we will be preserving and, and keeping, and as well as majority of the woodlands to their greatest extent possible. But we would be probably looking for a little bit of relief going forward on woodland disturbances and potentially could need some relief on impervious. The nature of the site is, once we less out all this area that we're gonna preserve, you know, our impervious coverage, for example, is, would then be based on a reduced lot area. I think on its face, we can comply with the requirement, but reducing the light, this, the lot area could end up needing us to, to seek a variance if, based on the ultimate plan we go with. We would likely need some kind of relief there. The plan's showing right now only one of the existing two access points. And we have been in, had some conversations with PennDOT about this project. I would prefer the traffic engineer to elaborate further if you guys had any questions about that. But very positive reception from PennDOT on, on the proposed use and the driveway. Other than that, the site right now, I think this, this use, one of the things I would also point out is that a lot of this use, these users don't need a tremendous amount of parking. The ordinance right now requires like one per five-hundred for this use. A lot of their users are only needing something more in the order of like one to eight-hundred or one per thousand. So we may pursue some relief from the saldo from that. Or, and then the last thing would be ultimate right of ways on Airport and Hardy. I think Hardy is good and Airport is a little short. But it's consistent with everything up and down Airport. And I think that we, we could make a good case to, to seek relief from that.
All right, TJ, thank you very much.
Sure.
And, and I believe Kurt, the, when they're ready to develop that, they'll be coming in front of us again for this...
Yes, absolutely.
...development of property. And I'm sure then we would certainly entertain the traffic study issues, et cetera, et cetera. So thank you very much for your presentation of the sketch plan.
Okay.
We'll take that certainly under consideration as we're looking at this.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're more than welcome. Everybody, appreciate you coming out. Have a good night.
Thank you.
And good luck.
We appreciate it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. All right, the next item on our agenda is the subdivision of Lower Bucks Home Builders LLC, two-zero Markham Court, Langhorne, PA. Requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval for the property located at one-nine-four-two Ford Road, Bristol, Bristol. Tax parcel number five-dash-one-nine-dash-three-zero. In order to subdivide the property into, and our notes say initially three. I've been advised it's two lots in an R-three residential zone District of Bristol Township.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Larry Young from Tri-Staten Engineers. Just to give you a little background, the lot area is a little over fifteen thousand square feet. We are in an R-three district that requires five thousand square feet per lot. There is, can you go to the second sheet? The existing features, there's an existing house that fronts on Hilltop right here. There's a shed and the, that's gonna remain. That has two existing non-conformities in the, so close to the front yard on Hilltop and the side yard it encroaches into. So it's, it's gonna be deemed an existing non-conformity. No matter where our lot line is, it's not gonna change its status at that point. So what we're trying to do is, this is an overall lot, fifteen thousand square feet. We're gonna subdivide, put the new lot line here. This lot will take access to Ford Road along here. And there will be a two-story dwelling. I believe it's gonna be about, the, the two lots are sixty-six fifty square feet and seventy-five hundred square feet. So they're in excess of the ordinance. The, there will be a garage, there will be a garage. There's going to be a driveway. There's gonna be a seepage bed out front along Ford Road. Excuse me. And this is the, the type of system. It's gonna be an underground system. Seepage bed or a dry well type of system where the roof drains will be connected. Again, we are requesting six waivers. And if you refer to the Gilmore Letter on page two, the waivers under number one, section one-seventy-seven thirty-five A, one-seventy-seven forty-three A, one-seventy-seven sixty-six A, all deal pertain to sidewalks along a budding streets. Again, there, there are no sidewalks out there on this side of the road nor on Hilltop. Number two, one-seventy-seven thirty-five A, one-seventy-seven forty-five A, one-seventy-seven sixty-seven A. They all pertain to curbing along a budding street. Again, there are no curbs in that area. Number three, we're, we're, we're adding one house and we're requesting a waiver from section one-seventy-seven thirty-five B not to widen the existing cartway of Ford Road and Hilltop Avenue and leave them remain as they are. The fourth waiver is one-seventy-seven forty-eight D-three for grading within five feet of the property line. Right over here, there's slight grading happening. Again, this will all have silt sock or silt fence to delineate the property boundary. And there won't be any encroachment onto a adjacent property. One-seventy-seven ninety-three A-one pertains to the plan scale, fifty or a hundred scale. We're using a larger scale to, to better see what's on the site. And then the last waiver is one-seventy-seven ninety-three C-three pertaining to existing features, utilities within two-hundred feet of any part of the tract. Again, we show them on the fronting roads on Ford and Hilltop. And we would be asking for a waiver for that. And then again, everything else in the letter, the one zoning issue is just the, the site triangles for the driveway. We, we can accommodate that. That, that issue will go away. And everything else will be, will complies.
Okay, Larry, thank you very much.
And, and the V in lieu of rec area for the sink, the, the new lot.
Okay. All right, questions from the commissioners? Any questions? Kurt?
No comments or questions.
Samantha?
No questions.
Bob?
No questions, Joe.
Okay, any questions from the audience? Okay. Again, following protocol, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Kathy.
In regards to Lower Bucks Home Builders LLC, twenty Markham Court, Langhorne, PA. Requesting prelim and final subdivision approval for the property located at nineteen forty-two Ford Road, Bristol. Tax parcel number five-dash-nineteen-dash-thirty. In order to subdivide the property into two lots in an R-three residential zone District of Bristol Township. We would recommend to council to agree with this and to approve and also to grant the waivers that are listed on page two of the Gilmore and Associates Letter dated July sixth, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, Kathy. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It has been moved and second. Any comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Okay, the next item we have on our agenda is consideration to recommend to council designate the following residential properties as blighted properties. Bob, you're up?
Yes, sir. Give me one second here. All right, a little brief summary. We began with two-hundred and four properties in November two thousand and fifteen. As of today, we're down to forty-one. Seven are being recommended tonight. First house is one-seventy-three Magnolia Drive in Levittown, PA. Property's been vacant longer than a year. Latest sales date was August eighth of nineteen eighty-three. We've been maintaining the property throughout summer. Property has serious overgrowth and junk and trash in the driveway. All mail sent to the property's been sent back unclaimed and there's no delinquent taxes at this time. Some pictures of the house there. Next house is two-eighty-four Dogwood Drive. House has been vacant for almost a year. Latest sales date was March first of two thousand and ten. We've been cutting the lawn since early summer. Roof on the property in the back is deteriorating. Multiple notice were sent to this property unclaimed and no delinquent taxes. Third property is eleven Sweet Briar Road, Levittown, PA. Property's been vacant almost a year now. Latest sales date was March first of two thousand, I'm sorry. Latest sales date was September ninth of two thousand and sixteen. We've been maintaining the grass for several months. All mail sent to the home was sent back unclaimed. Property's in pretty bad condition. No delinquent taxes at this time. Next property, nine Green Briar Road, Levittown, PA. Property's been vacant over a year. Latest sales date was March twenty-sixth of oh-six. Maintaining the property for several months. All mail sent to the property is unclaimed and there's also no delinquent taxes at this time. Brings us to nine-fourteen Bellevue Avenue, Encroden, PA. Property's been vacant over a year. Latest sales date was May seventeenth, two thousand and twelve. Been maintaining the property for several months now. All mail sent to the property's been sent back unclaimed. Also no delinquent taxes. Next property is six-oh-one Gerard Avenue, Encroden, PA. Property's been vacant for several years. Latest sales date was May thirty-first, two thousand and two. Been maintaining the property since beginning of summer. Neighbor states the floor inside the home is collapsing into a crawl space. All mail sent to this property's been sent back unclaimed and no delinquent taxes. Last property would be two-hundred Logan Avenue. House has been vacant over a year. Latest sales date was August fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Property's been maintained since beginning of summer. Property's also in very bad condition. No delinquent taxes at this time.
Thank you, Bob.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, you have seen the, heard the information concerning each of these properties and you have seen the pictures. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion. For the consideration to recommend to council to designate the following residential properties as blighted. Property at one-seventy-three Magnolia Drive, Levittown, TMP number five-dash-forty-nine-dash-four-seven. Property at two-eighty-four Dogwood Drive, Levittown, TMP number five-dash-four-two-dash-two-seven-two. The property at eleven Sweet Briar Road, Levittown, TMP number five-dash-seven-two-dash-three-six-three. The property at nine Green Briar Road, Levittown, TMP number five-dash-three-seven-dash-four-four-eight. The property at nine-one-four Bellevue Ave, Encroden, TMP number five-dash-five-four-dash-one-four-four. Property at six-zero-one Gerard Ave, Encroden, TMP number five-dash-five-four-dash-zero-zero-seven. And the property at two-hundred Logan Ave, Encroden, the TMP five-dash-thirteen-dash-three-one-zero.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to recommend to blight those seven properties. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It has been moved and second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, commissioners. Having nothing else on our agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, commissioners.
Great job.